Yes, exactly.
I didn't want to last one to walk in and there's still a couple minutes to go.
Hi, Zach. Everybody's early today.
Stewart working for us now? Helping with our services?
Is he?
I think he was one of our finalists.
I didn't know that. For what?
The PR business or something like that?
Oh, the DA one?
The DA, DA, that's right.
Yeah, because the DA one was...
Yeah, yeah, he's PIO.
Okay, interesting.
Morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you would please stand with me and for the flags, it remains staying for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Then we'll take up the Board of Supervisors Matters and we'll begin this morning with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to go over a couple of things. Hopefully, everybody walked into these chambers feeling a little bit healthier this week. This is Healthy Tulare County Week. There's a variety of activities taking place and I hope everybody is able to pay attention and see some of the efforts that the county is undertaking and sponsoring along with various partners in the community. And hopefully, this will continue to spread and we will increase the awareness of residents' overall health and well-being in our county. Last night, I was at the Tipton Town Council Meeting and I just wanted to take a quick second and compliment the Resource Management Agency staff who were there doing a presentation regarding the community plan update. It's a very lengthy process and I know there's a ton of outreach that's going on and it requires our staff to be in these unincorporated communities in the evenings and I know they're conducting a lot of plan updates throughout the county and they're doing a fantastic job, so I wanted to make sure I was able to acknowledge them and compliment them publicly. And then last thing, tomorrow night, I have a meeting with some residents in a community west of Tulare. It's called Oakyville. And Mike, that's not a joke at you or anything, but there's a community with that name west of Tulare and we're going to be meeting with them regarding several well failures and water issues that they've been having out in that community as well. So, that's all I have.
Supervisor Cox.
Second there, I thought you were coming to my house. Last week was very uneventful. I spent most of the week in bed, bronchitis and sinus infection, so last week was very uneventful. This week though, tomorrow, I'll be traveling with TCAG to a retreat, a CalCog conference where I'll be talking about state transportation issues and planning our legislative platform for the year. And next week, I will leave early Monday morning for Washington DC, also with TCAG, where we will meet with hopefully legislators and Department of Transportation folks to keep our funding flowing for road projects. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Last Thursday, I participated in a press conference in Selma about the water issues that we have in San Joaquin Valley, specifically probably the Fresno-Tulare County area. We had 20 electeds there. We had two supervisors from Fresno County that spoke. After that, I spent a half an hour on KMJ with Mayor Bob Silva, the mayor of Mendota. And this lack of water is nothing new for Mendota. This has been going on probably for the last eight years and the unemployment rate in Mendota's been sitting around 40% for all those years. And what's happening is we're starting to lose residents in these communities. It's disrupting the school districts and it's disrupting the people who have bought homes in those communities that are working agriculture. I think the main thrust of the press conference was that the electors aren't very happy with the governor's position on the drought, mainly because of the lack of flow from the delta. And it was mentioned many times by different electeds. And I believe that we're really looking to put more pressure on the governor for his administration to understand what the flows from the delta mean to the Central Valley. And that's all I have.
Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday morning, we had our meeting at Lower Thule on Success Dam and on the remediation project. It's kind of sad to look up there and you've only got, we've got 8,468 acre feet in Success Dam right now, if you think about that. A capacity of 82.5 and you've got 84. That just goes to show you what this drought is doing to our area and our communities. We're continuing to work on the enlargement project. We were hoping that we could take the spillway enlargement widening, tie it all together, put it in with our final studies on the dam and get this thing moving forward. But like always, the Corps decides they want to study this thing a little longer. Forty to sixty million dollars has probably been spent in studies on Success Dam and we're right back to square one. So, we'll continue to, you know, Mr. Schaefer's been working on this thing for years and years. All goes back to 2003 when we initially started this project to enlarge the pool and we've been in studies ever since, so it's kind of a sad, sad thing. I got ahold of Johnny Wong about 10 or 12 days ago and we were talking about, let's get the Divide Highway open, there's no snow. Johnny, at that time, said, hey, you know, we might, I said, Johnny, come on, let's get this thing open because hey, if we can bring a storm in here and dump some snow up there and weather, I'm all for it.
It's like washing your car.
I mean, we can always delay it a little bit, but, and sure enough, we're trying to get the highway open and supposedly supposed to have a big snowstorm come in here and maybe drop 10 inches of snow up there, so it would be, it would be well received, I think, by everybody. This Friday, we've got our San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting here in Visalia, so that's about all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. You missed one thing you were up and about. Last Friday, at Woodlake, we had a groundbreaking for a roundabout project intersecting two state highways, which is the first of its kind in Tulare County. And major improvement to that city. They've had a lot of good streetscape projects going forward, a transit center built and things are really happening in a very positive way in Woodlake and everybody's quite excited about it.
Mr. Chair, there was an opportunity to go to Super Taco and so that has healing...
Got you out of your healing, out of your bed.
That has, that has healing powers unknown to man.
Got you, all right, very good. Also, last Thursday, we had a step-up event in Ivanhoe. I believe we've probably had more step-up events in that community than any other in Tulare County. About 450 people were in attendance. Good, a good group of people out and about and a lot of vendors there. I want to especially thank all of our partners in that situation, sharing with Allison that Family Healthcare Center really sort of looks at that as being their project and we just assist them and that's exactly what we hope to see happening in our communities as we go forward. Last week, I did also attend a part of a conference at Tenaya Lodge that was hosted by the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District Governing Board on transboundary ozone pollution. And there were experts from many fields that were there with a lot of evidence that there is no doubt we are receiving ozone primarily from China that is affecting our ozone layers here in the San Joaquin Valley. And the only real issue is how much, how much of that is affecting us or impacting us. So, very, and the significance of that is this, we have made great strides in reducing our two criteria pollutants. One is particulate matter, starting with 1.0, now 2.5, micrograms and then, or sorry, millimeters. And then we have ozone and we have done a tremendous job of reducing nitrous oxides in this valley. We have done almost a billion dollars of funding to replace trucks, engines, tractors, you name it, different things to improve the air quality in this valley. Our industries, our businesses have put out, I believe it's estimated about $2 billion of expenses in meeting our, the rules that we have adopted over the years. And we have reduced the, this significantly and yet, even though we are, the air quality's basically improved about 80%, to come into compliance with the current federal standards, we have to get 80% of the remaining 20%. If money were no object, at this state, there, point in time, there is no way we could come into compliance. The technology simply does not exist. You'd have to basically shut down every combustible engine in the valley and still probably wouldn't meet the standard. So, the significance of this is that we are not held accountable, fortunately, for foreign pollutants coming into the valley. And that would help us perhaps in, not only just, we will continue to do what we need to do to try to improve our air quality. However, we have a penalty sitting out there. If we don't meet certain standards by certain timeframes, then we could lose our federal funding for transportation. And also, we could lose local control over our own plan. It would become an EPA, federal EPA plan, so we would lose local control. So, this is a worthwhile exercise to determine how much of this pollution is coming from foreign sources to remove, hopefully, that threat of penalty over our heads. So, anyway, I attended that and it was quite interesting to hear experts yelling at each other and not agreeing on things. But that's about all I have for today. Did want to point out that, that we're continuing to meet on water issues up and all of us are engaged in water issues and I'm actively engaged in the upper Kings River waters, creating and trying to create a sub-basin up there to deal with the statutory requirement of dealing with our groundwater. So, with that, we'll move on to our item number two, which is proclamation to declare the week of April 19th through the 25th as Crime Victims Rights Week in Tulare County. And I understand that our district attorney, Tim Ward, is here to speak to this matter. Morning, Tim.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Russo and Madam Counsel, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here. It's certainly a pleasure. On today's occasion, it's an honor to be here and ask that you do proclaim that week as National Crime Victims Rights Week. The theme this year is engaging communities and empowering victims. And I found that poignant because when I took the stead of the district attorney's office, our commitment was to increase our education on our outreach efforts inside the community with your support and also to focus our prosecutors, our investigators and our staff inside the office on providing services to victims. We have found, and it is no secret, that for victims to become survivors, we need to listen, we need to learn and we need to understand their needs and how we can better serve them. But the reality is, we in the district attorney's office alone cannot in all ways provide the services that they need. We have partnered in every way we can to the great community groups that we have inside our county to kind of give a comprehensive service to those victims. It's been said, in fact, this month in our office, there's a quote that says, "For many victims, rights are the vehicles with which they travel the road to justice and the healing." Our Victim Services Division reaches out to every reported victim of crime. Whether charges are filed or not is irrelevant from the aspect that they have been impacted, their families have been impacted, and they have certain rights, from crisis counseling, court support, restitution, community referrals. We're doing everything we can to make sure that every victim gets the assistance they need. I want to, as a steward of your support, and you have been with us along this path with victims every way, report to you that in fiscal year 1314, we have 10 victim advocates that bear the brunt of that work. You have graciously, and with some outside funding, will be adding an 11th. They provided service and support to nearly 5,000 victims of crime during that fiscal year. We've attended well over 100 community events and we estimate that the individuals that attended and that we were able to engage is well over 22,000 people. Every year during this week, we hold a victims memorial quilt unveiling ceremony to recognize and honor those families who've been tragically lost, or lost a loved one to violent crime. Time when those families can reflect. This year marks our 15th quilt unveiling. The ceremony will take place Friday, April 21st at 6:00 PM, 24th, excuse me, 6:00 PM at the Visalia Holiday Inn. This year, we will appreciate, we will recognize and reflect upon 10 lives that were sadly taken from our communities. It is sad to say that we have two individuals memorialized on that quilt, under the age of 10, with our youngest being three. I want to thank you for your partnership with us and support of everything that we're doing, but I do ask, on behalf of every person, every man and woman inside the office of the district attorney and really our law enforcement partners as well, who stand with us and support this week, to proclaim that week National Crime Victims Rights Week. Thank you.
Come join me in the wall, please. Tim gave more of a localized view. Our proclamation gives a little broader perspective. It says, "23 million Americans suffer the indignity of crime each year and may experience emotional, physical, psychological and financial harm as a result of the crime. And as a nation acknowledges crime's impact on individuals, families and communities and ensures that victims are treated with fairness, dignity and respect as they interact with the criminal justice system. Whereas 34 years ago, the President Task Force on Victims of Crime drew attention to the poor treatment of victims in the criminal justice system, calling it indifferent to victims' needs." And I appreciate the district attorney's comments today. Tulare County does not just pay lip service to this. The idea that we actually have dedicated 11 people to this task indicates our willingness to put our money where our mouth is and to actually support and protect our victims. Whereas, a decades-long struggle to balance the scales of justice resulted in victims' rights laws in every state and more than 33 state constitutional victims' rights amendments that enshrine the ideals of fairness, dignity and respect for victims of crime. Now therefore, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of April 19th, 20, through the 25th, 2015, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Tulare County and reaffirm our county's commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and address their needs during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year and express our appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims of crime and build a more just community. Signed, Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpoel, Phil Cox, Steve Worthley and Mike Ennis. Thank you, Tim. This does take action, so I entertain a motion. Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. That will bring us to item number three, a request from Kyler Crocker, Pacific Gas Electric, to adopt a resolution proclaiming April 2015 as California Safe Digging Month. Welcome, Mr. Crocker. Use either microphone.
Thank you, members of the board, CAO. April is Safe Digging Month and it's, for Pacific Gas and Electric Company, this is, this falls within our, our three main goals of providing safe, reliable and affordable gas and electric. Now granted, I think I speak not only for PG&E but for all of our sister utilities in talking about how this is a very important month for us. So, for Southern Cal Edison, Southern California Gas Company and also Communication Utilities as well. And so I think what, today, what this resolution, what we've been doing, really started last year in trying to just increase our awareness to the general public as far as, you know, we have commodities that we provide and, you know, people take for granted, unfortunately. And these are very dangerous commodities and so we're requesting that individuals call 811. It's a free service that's already provided in your rates and it just takes one phone call within 48 hours, someone will come out, they'll locate the lines and tell you, go ahead, move forward to dig where you need to dig. So that, you know, from a safety standpoint, that's obviously our main concern as far as why we're here, but also reliability. When we have any type of dig-ins, that causes disruption not only to the individuals that are working there, but many times it causes disruptions for other customers in the area as well. And, and then affordability, you know, we're not able to recover every third-party dig-in cost. And so, from an affordability standpoint, if the third party that actually dug in, if we're not able to recover those costs, then the rest of us as customers are going to recover those, you know, pay for those costs. So, it really hits on all three of our, of our main goals. And so, having said all of that, that's why we're here today to, to increase awareness over 811, Safe Digging Month, and I ask for the board's support.
Thank you, sir. Any comments, questions? You know, we, maybe they should have used the service at Dinuba when they were working on the Avenue 416, Almonte project. They managed to hit a major gas line and knock over about 10 electric power lines while working on that project, but it is, I mean, all kidding...
All the more reason to increase awareness.
And, but all kidding aside, there's, there are surreal personal safety factors here. People oftentimes are seriously injured or killed by not knowing what they're, in digging in a spot which is interacting then with a gas line or electrical line. So, entertain a motion. So, move. Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes and the votes are unanimous. Thank you, Kyler, for being here. This then will bring up our, open up our public comment period. I do have some folks who would like to address us this morning and I, I have names, but if you're not, you don't have to submit a document to speak. First, I have Michael Kennedy.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Kennedy. I am the principal of Bethel Christian School in Bakersfield, California. And I'm here today with a few of, a few of our high school student representatives. They're going to be requesting that your county board join with over 400 cities and counties across our nation and over 100 within the state of California who have already adopted a resolution to add the phrase "In God We Trust" within the county chambers. I did have the opportunity a few weeks ago to talk to Supervisor Worthley about this possibility and he noted that the students would be welcome to bring this presentation today and stated that your board would consider their proposal. So, we thank you for your time and would be willing to answer any questions to assist with moving this forward. Our students have already distributed to your clerk several handouts that hopefully will help your legal staff, county council, this board and also county staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Sampson? Morning, Elizabeth. Then would you please give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Elizabeth Sampson. What kind of address?
Well, it can be your home address or your school address, whichever you'd like to give us.
I think the school address is 2236 East California Avenue, if I remember correctly.
Bakersfield?
Yeah, Bakersfield, California. That's Bethel Christian School, by the way. That's my school. So, given to the clerk was a letter of invitation from Jackie Sullivan, a local council member from my town, so I'd like to read it to you. Dear Honorable Elected Officials, this is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties across America that are voting yes to proudly and prominently display our national motto, "In God We Trust," in the chamber where we conduct the people's business. My name is Jackie Sullivan and I'm the founder and president of In God We Trust America. I have served as a city council member in Bakersfield, California, since 1995. In 2002, I lent my city council to vote yes in displaying "In God We Trust" in our council chambers at City Hall. Soon after, all 11 cities in the county of Kern, as well as other cities and counties in California and across the country, are voting to do the same. To encourage this trend across America, we created a nonprofit organization named In God We Trust America with 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. Its sole purpose is to promote patriotism by encouraging elected officials to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" in their city and county chambers. On July 30th, 1956, during the Dwight D. Eisenhower administration, the US Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as the official national motto of the United States of America. Thus, displaying our motto is a legal right protected by the First Amendment. To help with the process of entering the "In God We Trust" motto in the chambers, a resolution is supplied, which is also one of the papers. The resolution was wrote so that either city or council chambers may use it. However, the majority of the resolution was written for city chambers, so it'll have to be modified, so you guys should have it.
Thank you. Lorena Wright? Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Lorena? Good morning. Can you give us your name and address, please? Are you going to say if you're from the same school?
Yes. So, can I start?
Sure.
Hello, my name is Lorena and I'm from Bethel Christian School in Bakersfield, California. I'm here because I want to tell you about how many counties and cities already have "In God We Trust" in their council chambers. So far, in California, 110 chambers already have this motto over their seal. I have given a copy of these cities and counties to the clerk. President George Washington once said, "It is our duty of all, it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of our almighty God. It's important that you consider putting this over your chambers because it is our national motto." Thank you for considering what I have to say and for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, before Lorena leaves, I have some documents regarding this matter, but I don't have a list of cities and counties. Has it been provided to you? There's one copy, all right. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Isaac Ricio, if I'm saying correct? You can correct me when you come up here, Isaac.
Morning. Good morning. Hello, my name is Isaac Ricio. I am from Bakersfield, California. Already, you guys already have, okay. I am from Bethel Christian School and from my part of the presentation, I will be covering the legal issues related to adding, related to adding the "In God We Trust" motto in your city chamber. First off, the clerk has given you guys the letter from the Pacific Justice Institute stating that this is legal. These papers state that Pacific Justice Institute specializes in defending religious liberty. The Pacific Justice Institute's main purpose is to defend you if there was any threats concerning "In God We Trust" motto. I would also like to mention that it is a nonprofit organization and the Pacific Justice Institute would be honored to defend you. They want you to take advantage of the offer if it comes down to it. If you have any other questions concerning the issue, you can call the Pacific Justice Institute from the number listed at the bottom of page two or visit their website at www.pji.org. We hope you consider adopting the "In God We Trust" motto. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address during public comment period? Good morning.
I'm Prudy Tanner from Family Focus in Porterville. We've recently been awarded the contract for, excuse me, to take over the YMCA's program and we're here just to say thank you for extending us a courtesy of allowing us a little bit of more time to figure this out. And we would also like to partner... And we would also like to partner with you and talk about providing care for your employees. This is.
Darlene Martinez.
And she is the site supervisor at Part View. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. As always, we're not able to take action on items which are presented during public comment period and are not on our agenda. However, I will assure the children who came from Bakersfield, we thank you for making the trip here. And we will have our council review this, and we'll take up this matter at a later time. Thank you. We will now close the public comment period and bring, and move to our consent calendar, items six through thirty-one. Are there any items which members wish to have those separately?
Mr. Chair, I would like to just make a comment, or we can, we don't need to pull it necessarily separately, but just to comment on item number twenty-nine. I do think that we should recognize publicly the sheriff's efforts to follow up on an item he had mentioned when he first took office, and that's the creation of two new deputies, so to speak, in the department, Deputy Busby. I think that's going to be an outstanding effort to enhance the image of the sheriff's department and law enforcement amongst our youth. And I know that there, it was mentioned in the item that sheriffs, explorers, or volunteers will be wearing the suit. I think Supervisor Cox has always wanted to be a cop, so he would be a great volunteer to wear this suit. But with that, that's the only comment I need to make, and.
It's going to need to be an extra-large.
If there's no further items to be pulled from consent, I would move for approval of the consent.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Innes. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. That will take us then to our.
Mr. Chair, can I have some kind of rebuttal?
Yes, you certainly may.
If I'm going to wear the Busby suit, then Supervisor Vanderpool's got to race in high heels again.
All right.
I'll pay to see that, by the way.
We will then move to our public hearing, nine-thirty timed item. A request from the Resource Management Agency to accept the general rule exemption as the appropriate environmental determination consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. And it goes on and on. I'll allow Mr. Washam to proceed.
Morning, Chairman, Supervisors, CEO, County Council. Mike Washam, Lurie County Resource Management Agency. They were here to bring PZ thirteen zero zero five to, for your consideration. An overview, the applicant is David Griggs. He's requesting a change of zone on a ten-and-a-half acre site located approximately half-mile north of Lemon Cove, along the east side of State Route one ninety-eight, where it intersects with State Highway two sixteen. The current general plan land use designation for the site is agriculture, and it's zoned AE forty, exclusive agriculture, forty-eight acre minimum. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the environmental document, which is a general rule exception, and recommended approval of the zone change on January twenty eighth this year. This is an aerial photo of the location. Project description, the applicant's requesting a change of zone to O recreation that allows limited recreational, commercial uses. This is, will be the zoning map. You can see the highlighted parcel being rezoned to O. In addition to this zone change, there was a tentative map, PPM thirteen zero forty-one, that was conditionally approved at the same Planning Commission meeting, contingent on your board approving this zone change. The parcel size and proposed uses are as follows. Parcel one is, let's see if I, parcel one is one point six-six acres, and it will have a hardlocked self-serve fueling station. Parcel two is one point five acres, and that's the existing restaurant that's located there. Parcel three, to the north of that, is for future commercial opportunities. The large parcel to the east is parcel four, and that is proposed to have RV boat storage on that site. And the remainder parcel has a, contains a large propane filling station for the business. This is the existing restaurant on the site. Little project history, effective January first of two thousand and fourteen, the property came out from under the Williamson Act. Under previous ownership, there had been use, special use permits obtained, and then the use expanded beyond the use, and there were some number of violations, code violations. And we entered into a code agreement, which required them to come forward after the Williamson Act was non-renewed to its entirety, to come forward and bring a zone, a change of zone application to get the restaurant in compliance. Therefore, on July of two thousand, in two thousand and thirteen, we brought PZI to your board for consideration for the one-and-a-half acre site of the restaurant. And your board had indicated that they, you thought that it would be better to initiate change on the entire parcel, which was the ten-and-a-half acre parcel, and that's how we proceeded forward. General plan consistency, the planning framework in the general plan talks about location of urban development. There's, it's that the county shall ensure urban development only takes place in certain areas. There are five areas that are identified. This is one of those, the fifth being within areas suited for non-agricultural development as determined by the procedures set forth in the RVLP plan. Under their RVLP evaluation system, this subject's site receives sixteen points, indicating it's within the gray area, and other factors should be considered about rezoning the location, existing uses, those types of things. The Army staff has worked closely with the Farm Bureau on this matter, as well as neighbors that are adjacent to the project, to make sure all of their issues are satisfactorily addressed. In response to the concerns expressed by the Farm Bureau about potential uses within the O zoning, we worked with the Farm Bureau, and we created a developer agreement that restricts development to only certain identified uses, such as are listed here, and there's a few others, but it limits what can actually occur on that. So, as part of the approval, they're required to sign this developer agreement, and the projects are limited in scope to those that are identified. Subsequent to that, the Farm Bureau has expressed satisfaction with the developer agreement, indicating that the project zone should result in a positive use of the property with minimal impact to neighboring agricultural uses. There are some additional concerns. Some neighbors were concerned about potential vehicle traffic heading east on three thirty-four, and some of the safety vehicles turning on and off of State Route one ninety-eight. In response, the Army has added two additional conditions in the developer agreement. One is that a clear line of sight at the intersection of three thirty-four and one ninety-eight. And then, all of these parcels, with the exception of the restaurant, are being accessed off of three thirty-four. We're not having additional driveways coming off of one ninety-eight. It's, you turn onto three thirty-four, and then you turn into the project. Have a couple, here's an aerial, three thirty-four, this is, this road here is where we'll come in, down here, and then they'll enter the project here, and there'll be a road here that accesses all the different parcels. This is at the intersection of three thirty-four and one ninety-eight, looking north. And then the next photo is looking south. So, the conditions of approval require that there's a clear line of sight. As you can see, that it's not a, it is in a turning radius, but it's not a very steep turn at that spot. With that, we recommend that the board open the public hearing and accept the following actions that's listed in your, that concludes staff report. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments by board members? All right, well, public hearing is now open on this matter. If you wish to address this, please come forward at this time, give us your name and address. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Worthley and members of the board. My name is Steve Brant with Quadnoff, and Quadnoff is representing Mr. Griggs on this zone change request today. We, the last time we were with you was when you initiated this project a while ago. And since then, we've been working with the staff. We have met with the Farm Bureau Land Use Committee on two occasions to go over their concerns and ideas. And this development agreement that Mr. Washam mentioned is one of the main pieces of this project that came out of those meetings. The ozone that we're proposing allows a number of uses that would probably not be appropriate for this site, such as apartment complexes, hotels, things that are too intensive for this site. And so, this developer agreement further limits the uses by saying that only the things within the developer agreement are uses that would be allowed on this site. Mr. Griggs is supportive of the developer agreement and is willing to place that additional restriction on the property. So, we are satisfied with the conditions in the development agreement and would ask for your approval on this zone change today.
Any questions or comments? You said ozone, I was thinking about air.
I know, it's kind of a, yeah.
Mine's thinking that way. All right. Any other folks wish to address this during the public comment period? Seeing none, we will close the public comment, I'm sorry, the public hearing, and bring it back for consideration of the board.
Mr. Chairman? I'm familiar with this property, and people may wonder how that building got built at this particular site. The original building was a fruit stand. And under our zoning in AE forty, that was allowable use to build a fruit stand. This property sits at the intersection of two state highways, Highway one ninety-eight and State Highway two sixteen. To me, it only makes logical sense for a higher and better use for a piece of property that intersects two state highways. So, with that comment, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And that will take us into our untimed item, which is a request from the county administrative officer to receive the mid-year budget report for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen and fifteen. I would just say before we get started, that we have a ten o'clock special meeting. The reason for that was because there was not time to do an amended agenda. So, Mr. Rousseau?
Thank you, Chairman Worthley, board. Gene Rousseau, county administrative officer. And before I get started, I'll wait for the, here we go. Before I begin my presentation, I want to start by thanking the number of individuals, and I'll start with the board of supervisors for being a good group of governing, governing body that has done a good job helping the county navigate through the Great Recession and its recovery. I also want to thank the department heads and electives that I work with. You guys have done an outstanding job and continue to do a good job, and it makes my job easier. And last but not least, my staff for helping put this together. This was a little bit more involved than in the past with all the personnel changes and what have you, but we survived, and here we are this morning. You know, before we started the meeting this morning, I was asking the chief clerk and our IT people about the pointer, and. Guess it was working for a second. That's okay. Anyway, that's okay. Thanks, Edgar. Sorry about that, because I got it working. I was going to show you that I actually figured it out, but, but anyway. My presentation is going to, I'm going to talk a little bit about the, where we're at, the mid-year, some of the highlights of the current year budget. I'm going to look, talk about the fiscal outlook for next year, some of the state budget impacts, the budget schedule, and then I'm going to get to recommendations. You know, I go over these protocols every year, and it's really served the county well if we put them in place. And the focus really of the presentation, to a certain degree in the next few slides, will be the second and fourth bullet points. You know, we use conservative revenue estimates to help cushion impact of potential economic downturn. And then we use one-time monies for one-time purposes. What a novel concept. We also, you know, we try to budget normal revenue amounts and so on. But those, the second and fourth bullet points really highlight the success of our county to a certain degree, and how we're able to afford to do things such as build jails and what have you. So, the overview of this current year budget is, you know, we're continuing our financial recovery. We employed a lot of different things during the Great Recession that we are now, that we are now addressing, such as workers' comp. We put furloughs in place, suspended furloughs, we changed work schedules, we froze steps and merits, all kinds of stuff. And we weathered the storm relatively well. The current year budget, again, increases the general fund reserve for the second year in a row from twenty-two to twenty-four million. The next bullet item is, you know, we went into negotiations last year. My office was working closely with our esteemed assessor, Mr. Hill, on a projected AV value. We didn't think, we expected early on, and we're talking February, March time period, that we would have a flat roll. So, we were going to take a conservative approach at the table with the bargaining units that were at the table that had not received increases the year before. And in the way, the way the county administrative office works with the board in coming up with recommendations for increases is, you know, we use surveys of positions throughout the county and in key areas and departments to help us guide our limited resources. The approach that we took in using the surveys and looking who had received the three percent increases in thirteen fourteen, we were going to give increases to the units, again, that were at the table, or we were hoping to. And then some targeted, limited targeted equity adjustments. We went into the negotiations expecting, we put nothing on the table. And then our esteemed Mr. Assessor, Mr. Hill, finished the roll, delivered it to our office, and it was higher than what we had expected. So, as a sign of good faith to our employees, we went back to the bargaining table and said, you know, we now are in a position to give you something, and we want to give it to you. If you've not, you're the unit that had not received an increase since oh eight. We recognize that, and we want to do something, and we did it. We got that done. In addition to that, so that's how the, that's how our salary increases and the approach that we take in negotiations is handled. It's usually handled in February, March. We're estimating what the future's going to be, which is interesting in this, in this day and age. We work closely with, again, the esteemed assessor, Mr. Hill, and in coming up with those estimates. So, I appreciate the working relationship we have with the assessor's department. In addition to the salary increases in this year's budget, we were able to do, put three million aside for building improvements, remodels, and relocating departments. You know, as everyone is aware, or if you're not aware, we are going to, the county's going to be taking over the county office of ed buildings, but the administration and the, and the.
Planetarium?
Planetarium, thank you. I always butcher that name. And we're going to be moving the HR folks into the Planetarium and IT into the administrative building. It's going to take some money to bring those buildings up to speed. And in moving over a hundred to two hundred people is going to be a challenge. So, the three million is set aside for that to happen, and it'll most likely start this fall. We saw the hiring of a consultant, a space consultant, to help us with this process, because we want to make sure we do it right, because once we put them in, they're going to be in there for a while. In addition to the three million for building improvements, at the same time, we're remodeling offices. We remodeled the auditor controller's office, district attorney's office, portions of the assessor's office. We're going to be getting to the DA relatively soon, excuse me, public defender. And, you know, and that's a morale boost to our employees. It's something that means a lot to us, and we're going to continue those improvements going forward, if money allowing. We put three million aside for county detention facility projects. So, this is in addition to the ten percent share of costs that we put aside early on when we accepted the projects from the state. And then lastly, we received some additional redevelopment dissolution revenues that we were putting into a trust, and the amount of that trust is up to around three million dollars. And we use it for strategic purposes, for grant matches and what have you. Again, this is a good example of conservative revenue estimates generating one-time monies, and one-time monies used for one-time purposes. This is a recap of the general fund budget over the last five years. You can see, again, we're slowly building from the reductions in the oh-nine, oh-ten, the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven period. Our staffing's been relatively stagnant. We've added. We've added some here, deleted some in some departments. I would say the Health and Human Services and maybe Public Safety are the departments that have grown the most in the last year or two with AB one oh-nine and the expansion of the Affordable Care Act. Here's another interesting process that we go through, just looking at the global amount of revenues that have been collected to date. And you can see this year, it bumped up quite a bit. We are, the Health and Human Services Department is receiving some of these funds a little bit early. They are, you know, they changed their accounting method, so they're starting to transfer monies from trust funds and on a quarterly basis instead of the end of the year. They receive expanded Medi-Cal revenues for the Affordable Care Act and so on. So the forty-two percent is something that we're monitoring. It's had a cash flow impact, it's had a tran impact, and we're working closely with the auditor's office as close as we can and with the Health and Human Services Department to monitor those, that activity. On the expenditure side, it's relatively consistent, certainly the last four years. And it's over fifty percent because we charge things out at the beginning of the year, in some cases on purpose, workers' comp and ISF, so we can, so those funds can generate interest to reduce future allocations. And so the fifty percent, fifty-two percent is not unreasonable and certainly consistent with prior years. So, the mid-year budget review, the majority of the departments are gonna come in below their targets, which is a good thing as testament to the fiscal oversight of our leadership, and I appreciate it tremendously. The one area of the general fund budget that's gonna kind of probably come in a little bit over the target is the miscellaneous criminal justice budget. That's the budget where we put all the revenues that we continue to get from the court system and our payments to the state to help run the court system. The, apparently statewide penalties and fines have been down and they are down at Tulare County, too. So we're monitoring that. The overage is only gonna be a couple hundred thousand, but typically this budget unit has a surplus of four to five hundred thousand. So we're gonna watch this closely. Again, the, you know, the revenues are forty-two percent higher, which is eight percent more than last year. The one revenue I didn't touch on was Cal Work revenues have increased because recipient benefits have increased. They increased five percent in this fiscal year and in the state budget, which I'll get to in a little bit, the recipient benefits are gonna increase another five percent. So it's interesting, it's probably impacting and one of the reasons why our local sales tax has gone up, because recipient benefits have gone up. Countywide revenue estimates are holding up with steady growth. That's an understatement, you know, we, again, we have conservative estimates and they're designed to hold up and stay steady. Most importantly, you know, the carryover fund balance, the amount that we expect to save every year is, the structural level's five point eight million, and we're gonna come in well above that once again for this year. Outside funds, outside the general fund, the fire department's fund balance is in good condition. In the second year in a row, they've increased their appropriations for equipment replacements, specifically large rigs and patrol vehicles. So they're now in a position to buy a large fire engine and a patrol vehicle, one each every two years. So that will help with the replacement. We have some old rigs on the road that are costing a lot to maintain and we look forward to that process starting fairly soon. The library fund also has a strong fund balance, like the other areas of the county that we've been remodeling and changing carpet and what have you. We've been renovating various branches. We were able to maintain services during the Great Recession largely because the library's outside the general fund. They don't have to fight with guys with guns because they would lose that battle. Internal service funds are projected in the year in good shape. There are one or two small ones that might have some issues and we'll adjust the rates accordingly. Workers' compensation, that's one of the things that we did during the Great Recession. We reduced, we self-insured in the oh-four, oh-five era time period. We overfunded during the good times, which built up a large reserve, and we were able to bring our workers' comp charges down by approximately fifty percent. It's one of the things we used to help reduce the impact of the Great Recession. The last two fiscal year budgets, including fourteen, fifteen, we've bumped that by two million a year, so we're up to nine million. The structural level's probably around eleven, so we're gonna have to continue to bump that up, but we are certainly getting back to where we need to be. We're filling the hole that we dug. And last but not least, other ISF funds, in particular, general liability property and malpractice are in good shape. So the initial assessment for fifteen, sixteen is cautiously positive. It's, I feel like a former Fed chairman. The county is, again, steadily recovering from the Great Recession. As far as property values go, I'll get to this in a minute and I'll spend a little bit more time on it. It's static to slow in the housing and commercial markets. Statewide sales tax has been, has helped quite a bit. I'll touch on that in a slide or two. And local sales taxes have been up. So in today's agenda, we have an agreement with a sales tax consultant that we actually terminated the contract four or five years ago. We are re-engaging with that firm to obtain detailed sales tax information to help us explain the increase and kind of help with the economic development and what have you. So local assessed value, this is one area that is just very, very interesting. And why is it interesting? Because it generates about two-thirds of our discretionary revenues. So if you look at, and it tells a story. So if you look at the, here's a pointer, all right. The ten-year period from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand five, the average during that period, assessed value growth was around, around four percent, consistent growth from year to year. I went back even farther. I went on the assessor's website that has the role values back to nineteen eighty-eight. From nineteen eighty-eight through two thousand, let's see, two thousand nine, we never had a negative assessed value roll. And I'm guessing that we never, we've never had a assessed value of negative growth in this county since Prop thirteen. I wasn't able to go back to seventy-eight, but just guessing, looking at that chart, we've never seen a negative AV growth until the last six years. So, and during those years, the twenty-two years leading up to the green bars, actually leading up to the purple bars, to the housing boom, there were the, there were four years that the AV was never below three percent. Four years, it was between three and four percent. Two years, it was between four and five percent. The sixteen remaining years, it was greater than five percent. So we saw steady growth and have seen it since seventy-eight. The average during those years was five point six percent. Then we hit the housing boom, denoted with purple, which is my favorite color. During that time, a four-year period, we saw the overall, so for the prior ten-year period in yellow, the total AV growth was forty-nine point three percent. During this four-year period, it was forty-five point one percent, kind of the definition of a bubble. And perhaps higher if the assessor had the staff to actually get those enrolled in a timely manner. You know, assessors up and down the state were impacted significantly and we weren't alone. And it actually helped us during, helped us recover that they were adding value as they were reducing, kind of an interesting process. I had mentioned it's like having money in the bank, it just doesn't earn interest. And that's, and that's the case. So interesting process. The last six years has been difficult, especially when two-thirds of your revenue comes from property tax growth. The average has been a little over one percent, one point one percent. The last two years being three point one and five percent. A couple of things, a couple of observations. One is, this kind of reminds me, you know, three negative AVs in six years is almost like the San Francisco Giants winning three championships in five years and maybe six if they don't win this year. What I did was, I took Prop eight out. The last two years, the assessor has enrolled, over the last six years, they enrolled over three billion dollars worth of value into the Prop eight program, three point one. The last two years, they added, reduced that approximately four hundred ninety-six million for last year's AV, so we came in at three one. If we hadn't, if we didn't have Prop eight, it would've came in at one point three. And then this last year, the top number, twenty-nine million, they reduced, they increased value of properties by eight hundred and forty-two million. If we hadn't, didn't have that in place, the AV would've been, let's see, three point nine percent. So this average here of one percent over the last six years without the increase in Prop eight would've been point six percent. So when you're, so when sixty percent or more than two, approximately two-thirds of your discretionary revenues are tied to assessed value growth and you have no assessed value growth, you've got a challenge. Prop one seventy-two is, 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 it's been a really boom for the county to a certain degree. It's helped us. You can see where it peaked during the housing boom of oh-seven, oh-eight, close to twenty-three million. It went down approximately thirteen to fourteen percent on an annual basis from its height in two thousand, let's see, two thousand eight to two thousand ten. We are estimating that it's gonna come in at about twenty-nine billion, it'll probably be a little bit in excess of that. We are budgeting about twenty-five five right now. If it declines by ten to thirteen percent like it did in the Great Recession, it will be back close to our revenue estimate. So we've been very prudent, the board's been very prudent with this particular revenue estimates because it's subject to economic downturn, subject to reduction. So we gotta be careful in how much we plow into, plow future growth with this revenue source. Local sales tax has been interesting. The last year, it's been very strong. We've been waiting for the, for the impact of the drought on our local sales tax. We've not seen that yet. We've talked about most likely the impact will be coming this fall, hopefully, not hopefully, this fall or next calendar year. Hopefully, that's not the case, but we are seeing steady growth from quarter to quarter, boom, 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 boom. The HDL agreement will help us with that. But again, local sales tax is not a major player in discretionary revenues go. Coming in around ten, eleven million, it's around six to seven percent of the total discretionary revenues and it fluctuates up and down to, again, subject to the economy. So we have to be careful with this, but it is certainly trending in a positive direction. So state budget impacts, I'll quickly go through this. State budget is about one point six higher than the year before, one point four percent higher. It includes two propositions that were passed last fall. The rainy day proposition or account stabilization account, as the governor calls it, that is projected with his budget to be, to finish it, land at two point eight billion in June of two thousand sixteen, if everything holds up. Hopefully it does. And then it also includes Prop one, the water bond essentially. The first apportionments or first appropriations from that are included in the governor's proposed budget to the tune of five hundred and thirty-two million, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on that. Government finance mandates, the governor's paid back a hundred million dollars statewide in mandates during the current fiscal year. He proposes to pay back five hundred and thirty-three million, which for Tulare County is one point five million next fiscal year. And depending on where, how the budget, the condition of the budget at the end of this fiscal year, it could be more or it could be a little bit less. It will be adjusted and may revise, it's gonna be coming out next month. The redevelopment dissolution process has also really come in handy for the county. We use those monies, the one-time portion of those monies to, we put into that trust fund that I referred to earlier for future economic opportunities, infrastructure opportunities and what have you. The ongoing piece, we help fund the sheriff's community-based officer program. You know, redevelopment is, was designed to help communities, so the residual ongoing amounts that are available are used to pay for the community-based officers. And the economic recovery bonds that the Governor Schwarzenegger employed some time ago, those are gonna be paid off. The infamous triple flip where they, where they take a quarter of our sales tax, give us, give us a property tax, a profit ERAF. It's a myriad of revenue shifts and what have you. That's gonna end. And then we're gonna find out what our twenty-five percent is gonna be here in the next six months. Administration of Justice, again, this is important for our public safety departments. The AV funding is estimated to be one point six billion in base and a hundred and thirteen million point seven in growth. That group will be given a presentation in the next month or two on their efforts. It's been a successful effort as far as, a great example of departments coming together without silos to do what's best for the county and for the justice system. And I've said all along, getting all the players in one room, the sheriff, public defender, probation, district attorney, the courts, the judges and what have you, and our social services folks, is really improve the dialogue that might not have been there absent of one oh-nine. Citizens Option, the next piece is also funded through the one oh-nine mechanism. These were the public safety small programs that we used to lobby for year after year after year after year when the Democrats would put it on the cutting block and use it to leverage Republicans to get to approve the budget. We don't have to do that anymore. It's funded in the Constitution and it looks like the funding is, is gonna provide some growth funding for those programs. And last but not least, and dear to our chief probation's heart, is SB six seventy-eight, and it's estimated to come in at a hundred and twenty-five million, which is three million more than last year. You know, a lot of the activity, we're gonna spend a lot of time in this area, not in my presentation, but my staff throughout the county has spent a lot of time on the drought issue. The cap and trade appropriates one billion dollars in this year's budget, notably two hundred and fifty million for high-speed rail and two hundred million to the Strategic Growth Council, which we have applied for a number of grants and have not been successful to date, but it's not because of our effort, it's because of the rulemaking that they put in place that we're actively trying to change. The next item, Prop one, as I indicated earlier, they're gonna allocate or they're gonna appropriate five hundred and thirty-two million, most notably twenty-one point three for groundwater management planning with Ms. England in our office, thirty-two point eight in the ERWIP process, which we are, we are a member of the ERWIPs in our county as well, we should be. And the sixty-nine point two million for safe drinking water in small disadvantaged communities. I think we have a few of those in our county. And that's through the State Water Resource Board. So we're gonna be spending a lot of time and effort taking advantage of this very difficult drought that we're going through to help leverage our state partners to hopefully get some things done that might've taken longer to get done. Working down, the water action plan was passed by the governor and there've been a lot of, a lot of issues with that. The Groundwater Management Act, the budget, there's six million dollars in addition to the buckets that I've mentioned earlier that are gonna go help DWR provide technical assistance to agencies up and down the state to develop their plans. And then emergency drought response, there was a hundred and fifty million on a one-time basis in the budget. This is gonna change in the may revise because since the budget was recently, on March twenty-seventh, the governor signed emergency drought legislation to the tune of over a billion dollars of interest to us, a hundred and twenty-eight million for workers and communities. We're not sure what that means. Hopefully, it'll help some of the communities that Supervisor Sheeda was referring to and ours. Two hundred and seventy-two million in Prop one for safe drinking water and water recycling. And lastly, six hundred and sixty million from Prop one E for flood control projects. Health and Human Services has really been slammed, impacted by the Affordable Care Act and other program increases. So you're seeing increases of Medi-Cal. As I indicated earlier, Cal Works is a five percent increase to recipients are gonna be paid with our money, basically. They're gonna take a portion of our health re-alignment monies and give it to our residents, the IHSS or some of our residents that are on, that are receiving benefits. IHSS had a, they restored the seven percent reduction in service hours from the year before. That's gonna cost about a half billion. And that, lastly, healthcare reform has been, has been a big impact statewide and certainly in our county from a staffing perspective and a revenue perspective, and it's gonna just continue to grow. Housing, land use and transportation, you know, the governor, we all are aware that our infrastructure is in desperate need of... of, of, of improvement. TCAG is working actively to, to, to help the, help the policy go in the right direction, whatever that means. And they're looking at a number of ways to fund future road improvements, including road usage, but that's not gonna, it's not gonna come out for a number of years. And lastly, the special distribution fund is, is continued to decrease every year. Those are the monies that go to help mitigate casinos and counties, and there'll be a little money this year, but not much. So future budget challenges, as I indicated in the assessed value slide, we're not seeing a whole lot of, of activity. In some areas of the county, you're seeing more than others. So the assessed value growth, we're gonna look at probably flat to a slight increase this year from the assessor's office. We'll, we'll wait to see. We did get the, and the, the state sends a letter out every December that instructs assessors on how to value property this year. The CPI for the, the Prop thirteen CPI, which is, cannot exceed two percent, is at one point nine nine something percent, so it's close to two. So if I was a betting man, I would guess three point one six percent increase, but we'll see. The assessor holds their cards close to the vest, and they don't divulge them until the very end. Retirement costs has been something that, that will be a challenge going forward. We, we did have a breather, we will have a breather next year. The retirement board changed some, some assumptions and things, and, and we've got a very good working relationship with the retirement board. They allowed us to do some things during the, the Great Recession that certainly helped the county, and we've come out the other end in, in better shape than we would've been otherwise. So we're, we're working with them to, to, on this issue, and the work in progress. I indicated earlier, the workers' compensation costs, we reduced fifty percent during the Great Recession because we built up a reserve. We need to get them back, and we're slowly getting there. We're at nine, we need to get to around eleven, and we should get there in the next year or two. And lastly, it's the drought. I mean, that's the big, that's the big, you know, gorilla in the room. Its impacts, I received an email from the city manager from, from Woodlake last night or yesterday afternoon. A number of wells in his area are going, are, the water pressure has dropped significantly. Farmers are selling water to districts. It's, it's just getting more and more difficult. And so in the drought, you know, we're gonna have, we've asked the, the assessor to give a presentation in June sometime to talk about the potential impacts of the drought on our farming community. Again, the farms in, in the Williams-Schmidt program are valued at the revenue that they generate, so if they're not farming and if they're following land, it's not gonna help with AV. We are to have a flat, relatively flat AV, and to have the, the ag values go down would not be a good thing. So, so the budget development schedule is what it is. We're gonna be bringing this, we're basically asking to roll over this year budget to be used between July, July first and the date of the, of the hearings, which will be in, in September, September fifteenth. And this allows the, you know, the, the county to continue to do business while we're working on next year's budget. It also allows us time to get the final state budget, assessed value from the, from the, from the assessor and so on, and have a, have a better handle of, of what, amount of monies that we have. So the recommendations that I have or the requested actions at this point are to receive the mid-year report, the proposed schedule that I just went over, and we have a number of personnel changes, probably more than we used to, we usually have at mid-year. It was kinda, one of the easy things during the, the Great Recession is we didn't do much. We didn't give any increases of any. And now that we're growing out of it, we, there are needs throughout county land to, to give adjustments here and there. We are the largest organization in the county. We have four thousand, approximately four thousand employees, not including extra help. And, and so we go through a survey process. Departments are looking at, at various, some of their positions to provide greater flexibility in terms of hiring, organizational functionality and what have you. So if you look at the resolution, there are a number of positions that we're flexibly allocating from one to two, so I don't have it up here, but it, it allows departments greater flexibility in, in dealing with employees, bumping employees when, when, when they deserve to be bumped and so on. And we did that in, in a few departments in the past, ag department being one, it's really helped them out quite a bit, and we're continuing that process. And there are some targeted equity and merit adjustments in there that are, that are well-deserved. And lastly, the, we need to authorize, we request that the, authorize the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, elections and everything else with concurrence of the county minister to officer to process any budget adjustments stemming from the mid-year report. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions or real comments by Board members, Mr. Cox?
There's one real quick question. I was expecting to see we're gonna add so many positions and deleting, because I noticed in the employee or in the personnel resolutions, there was a couple deletions, a couple of name changes and several adds. Can you tell me, how many positions are we adding with this action?
Right, that is an outstanding question. Excuse me. I'd have to look.
I know it helped Human Service Agency lawn, I believe it was thirty positions there.
No, I don't, I, I don't know that exact number. It'll certainly be reflected in when we do the, the, the annual budget in September, but I, I don't know the.
I think it's important to point out, as was mentioned, thirty members on, on Health and Human Services are subvented departments, so these are not gonna be general funded positions. There are some general funded positions, but.
Yeah.
The larger, the larger number of increase, I believe, will be on the Health and Human Services side of the ledger.
Yeah, the majority of positions are in Health and Human Services. I've added a position in my office for the, to oversee the water program. We're gonna, my office is taking on more and more duties.
Sheriff is adding a couple, DA is adding one.
Sheriff is adding a couple. The, the fire department of note is adding a battalion chief. All these positions are gonna be funded with the, with the fourteen fifteen budget salary savings most likely. Battalion chief in the fire department is one that'll help them move three of their battalion chiefs that are currently performing administrative duties out into the field. So instead of splitting the county up with three battalion chiefs per, per half of the county, they're not gonna split it up into three. They'll have much better coverage, better supervision, mentoring, the whole nine yards. So we look forward to that change, and anyway.
At the time that I did my, before, at the time I gave my comments at the beginning of my position as, as the chair of the chair, I, I pointed out, I think we need to look at our organization where we have, have cut back a number of positions and suffered through the, the difficult times, and now that we have moved back into a better position, looking at those situations where we have people who are working extraordinarily long hours, difficult, under difficult circumstances, to see about us making sure that we get people back to normal working type of conditions and, and adding positions to be able to ensure that that would happen.
Mr. Cox, you had a question?
Yeah, finally, no, no other questions, just I, I wanna thank Gene for his presentation because for me, it's almost like every presentation you've given since you've been here, the county is conservative and doing well.
Yeah.
And that's what, you know, I, I listen for. We're healthy, we have a plan, and we're following the plan. I, I think this board and, and Gene is to be commended for the way we address our budget, the, the conservative nature in which we look at our projections and how we go into negotiations with our employees using one-time monies for one-time purchases, some one-time things that this board knows I don't like, but for the most part, using one-time monies for one-time purchases is a smart way to do it. If you find a dollar in a couch, you, you can spend that dollar, you don't commit to spend that dollar every year for twenty years after that. So I think we, we've done a good job. Gene, thank you very much for the presentation. I, I come out of this with the county is, is done well in its budgeting and its planning and is healthy financially. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'd also just, just like to thank Gene for this presentation, and the, the greatest thing right now is the drought, and we don't know how long it's gonna last, we don't know what the future looks like. That could be the big thing that could impact our budget is our tax base, so.
Absolutely.
Thing that we're being a little bit.
And to that, and that's why we've requested to have the assessor come and give us sort of a one-on-one on, because my understanding, and he'll, he'll correct us, is that with, under Williams-Schmidt contracts, it's not the assessed valuation of land, it's, it's the productivity of land. So where, like Supervisor Shida's indicated, he may be pushing forty acres of citrus this year on his property, you had a high-producing forty acres of citrus that will be producing nothing, and that could have a pretty sizable effect on our, our general fund revenues. There are also our side effects in terms of sales tax, dollars that are not spent on sprays and, and then of course, the effect on people's economy, the economy in general where people are no longer working those fields, and so there's a loss of revenue that way. But at least we'll begin to have some understanding of what the real, real property issues may be as we begin to see acres go out of production. Any other, my only comment is gonna be, Gene, that I, I feel very good about our county's position. The one area that, that I think we need to look at and address is our retirement obligations. And when we did a ten-year smoothing period, we still have yet to recognize, I believe, four to five years of, of the terrible downturn that we had, and, and because of that, we see our funded level dropping, 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 and it will continue to drop for a period of time. One of the things that happened this year, a big thing, was a change of a, of a, as, as there are, you know, like retirement amortizations or, or calculations are based upon, on what people think is going to happen in the future, so there was an assumption of a four percent inflation factor, which we lived under for many, many years, when we hadn't had inflation of over one percent for many, many years. And so that was adjusted downward to three percent, and that really reflected why our, our payments went down a little bit this year. But we still see this issue of unfunded liability growing, and I think that's something we need to be addressing. Otherwise, I, I feel very, very good about the county and the position we're in. We're making our final COPS payment this year, and the money's already in trust to pay that. We're looking at being able to meet our matches for the projects which we have received funding from the state for the, for the jails in, in Porterville and for the project at Sequoia Field. So we're doing well in terms of making, making those matches, so I feel very good about where we are. So any other questions or comments?
I have one comment I forgot to include in my presentation. You know, the, the personnel changes and reclassifications, deletes and amendments and what have you are all, are all pending meet and confer with impacted unions. I forgot to make that comment, so I wanna make it clear. This is all, all these actions are pending, reaching out to our unions, which we're currently at the table with a majority of them. Two other items real fast. The current year budget also includes about a half million dollars to help the sheriff's department modernize some of their old equipment, shotguns and radios and all kinds of stuff, and, and that's, that's a, I think, a ten-year plan that we, we've started, and hopefully we can accelerate. And lastly, according to the, the assessor, he has, the assessor's office has started reducing some ag values, not a lot, but some. So, and they started last year, so there's a little bit in last year's AV, and there'll be some reductions in this year's, and that's a good thing instead of waiting and doing a significant adjustment at some point, so thank you.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion?
Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. That concludes our items today in our open session, council. We have, oh, I'm sorry, we have a special meeting. You don't have to stick around for the special meeting, it's not so special that you have to be here, but we have one consent item, which is to appoint Mike Shearer to the Exeter Ambulance District. We entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Vanapul. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. That concludes our general action, and now we need to go into closed session, council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Your board has items A through H on its closed session agenda. Item B is, I'm sorry.
What?
Nope.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, I, I apologize. Item E, as in Edward, is being pulled from the closed session agenda.
Wes?
I do not anticipate any announcements.
Michelle, can you open that?